I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. Marked the meeting open at 7:01 PM. And we'll move on to item number three, public comments.
Bob Koselowski, Pearl Street, Seymour, Connecticut. Reason for me to come here tonight, want your board to reconsider the bonding package that you want to bring up in November, the 21-plus million dollars. And the reason being is, reading through your minutes and stuff, I don't see many questions that were asked about the community center. The community center opened in April of 2004 as a senior center. It's now being used for multiple purposes. The sign on the side of the building had the grant money that was given to the town of Seymour for that development, plus the first selectman in office at that time, his name was up there too. That sign has been removed. I think the former governor and the first selectman, former first selectman's name should still be up there because they're the ones who started this whole program, moving from over on 67 over to the community center. I think it'd be more beneficial if we borrowed 1.4 million dollars for communications, which is a priority under short-term borrowing. There's no sense paying back 1.4 million dollars over 20 years because it makes no sense. By that time, we're going to be spending more money in that 20-year period for communications because there's always advancements in it. Also, on the community center, there was a company that came in, and I don't know if you saw the report, this was a number of years ago, probably eight, nine years ago, that they came in, maybe 10 years ago, came in and did a study what had to be done at the original community center, to bring it up to code and bring it into full use, which at this time in dollars-wise, it would run about, I believe, nine to 10 million dollars the cost to renovate the current building that we're in, instead of spending 15 million. There's no really program for the 15 million. There's just pie in the sky, what we want to see at the community center down there. I also read where possible leased property to put a community center on. Why would you lease property? All big companies now are buying their properties, like CBS, Walgreens, they bought property, they moved out of the lease agreement type things. Bonding for the roads, we still haven't paid back the principal yet on the first 10 million dollars. At least, that's what the budget shows. We're only paying back the interest of about $153,000 this year, and we haven't put in the $500,000 principal payments over the 20 years for the $10 million. So I would, I would ask you to really look at, because we went back in late 1999 to 2000. It's very disappointing when you talk to the administration and they just give dirty looks and shake their head and really not paying attention to what's being said. I went through this personally, in the financial crisis in the year 2000, sitting on the Board of Finance and working with the first selectmen back then. We had to tax the people three additional mills to make up the deficit. Our debt now, if you go through with this, our debt will be more than what our budget is, overall. We're still paying back on the high school, Jaffiel Lopresti School. We're paying back a lot on a different debt. And finally, because I know I don't have much time to talk, I have other issues that I'll bring up, and I'll come to every meeting and bring up different issues. But just filing for FOI requests is impossible in this town. It's all public information. There was a letter sent concerning one of our employees at the police department. As a police commissioner, we're in charge of employees. I gotta pay $1 to get a copy of that letter, as a police commissioner. I also asked for this financial information, hopefully I would have it by today. But no, I get letters from lawyers, which is legal. They have four days to respond, they receive my request, and then I gotta wait. They have to do it promptly, but promptly can mean 20 days, 30 days, whatever they feel is promptly. But I don't get any information, and you don't ask, if you ask a question, I go and ask the finance director a question, he's not supposed to tell me the answer, because you don't have to answer questions from the public. I don't understand that. Like, I'm here in public comment now, you're not going to ask me no questions and you're not going to answer the question. I'm just asking you to really start asking the chief elected official this town, serious questions about our finances, because we're not in great shape. Last of all, we're ranked around 40th at the highest mill rates in the state of Connecticut out of 169 municipalities. So you're saying we're good in finances? I don't think so. We're overtaxing the people. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Hearing no other public comment, we'll move on to item number four. Approved minutes from the September 3, 2019 regular meeting, can I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Al, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Act.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes, I motion passes 6-0. Item number five, first elections report, met with Boy Scout Cody Kellogg at the Seymour Library to see the Eagle Scout project that he has done. He was able to do a great deal of landscaping around the flagpole next to the building. The project came out fantastic, and it's a great addition to the library. I look forward to having Cody join us at a meeting in the near future when we, when he, excuse me, is awarded his Eagle Scout. Joined IT Director Rob Dyer on a CCM panel to discuss cybersecurity for towns and cities. Rob and I had the opportunity to not only discuss what Seymour has put in place over the last few years to help keep our data more secure, but to also talk about the advantages of merging functions with the Board of Education and the benefit that that provides to the taxpayers, even though we're overtaxed. Met with folks from the YMCA to see if there is any potential fit with them and the talent to collaborate on a new community center. This was just a preliminary discussion, the one that I expect to continue in greater detail should the vote pass in November. Met with Mary McNellis to discuss the new townwide quarterly mailer that will be going out. You get the, twice a year, they send out now the open, I guess the fold open we'll call it with all the programs.
Yeah.
This is actually going to be an eight-page thing that's going to be done once a quarter that will include information from all different departments and things. So I'll have a draft for you by mid-November, just to review, because we're going to do a test to see what it looks like, with the expectation of the first one going out the beginning of January. That's the end of my report. I might even go down the rest of it. Okay, this, item number six, discussion, take possible action regarding 2019 emergency management performance grants. In your packets, you have a packet that was presented by Tom Amy. This is our annual grant that we go after through Homeland Security. So there's a resolution that I will need to read, any specific questions that you have, because this is security-based, we're not going to really discuss in open session, but Tom, Amy is available to discuss with you. Most of you probably saw the email that Bob and we sent.
Yeah.
Tom did provide a response back, which I could give to anybody offline if they want to, just didn't want to violate any FOI rules since obviously we don't follow FOI in the town of Seymour. But, anyway. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen may enter into, with, and deliver to the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate, and further resolve that W. Kurt Miller as first selectman of Seymour is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Anne Marie. Second by Al. Any discussion?
Just under discussion, if you can send me Tom's response. I know, just from training points of view, I know that they have to have the training in order to get the funding, but I like to read what Tom has to say.
Yeah, anybody else want to say? Yep, okay. All right, so I'll send it to each of you individually, that way we don't, that's okay, right, Rich? So you'll have, I'll send that tonight when we get back to the office. Anything else, any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Alright.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes, I motion passes 6-0. Item number seven, discussion, take possible action regarding human resources rules and regulations. Now I know, we initially said that Chris would not be joining us tonight, but here live in color is our HR Director, Chris Pelosi. I had a conversation yesterday with Trish. Trish had some questions, but I wanted to have Chris just come up, go over it one more time, see if anybody has any additional questions, anything they wanted to add, talk more about, and then we can kind of go from there. So Chris, if you wouldn't mind talking into the microphone, please?
Sure. As Kurt has suggested, I'm here tonight to answer any questions relating to the personnel rules and regulations that were distributed during the last Board of Selectmen meeting. If you recall, back in July, we had discussed policy review and development as one of my primary areas of focus in the coming months, specifically new human resources policies that provide some level of control, consistency, and structure across town departments while ensuring compliance with respect to employment legislation, and in addition, informing employees of their responsibilities as well as the town's expectations. So with that, I know Trish and I have already spoken to address several questions that she had on various areas of the policy, and the goal for tonight was to sort of take any additional feedback the board may have to offer into consideration before my final review of the policy with Town Council. So with that, if there's any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them tonight or at your convenience throughout the week, if anything were to come up after tonight in further review of that policy.
So the two, the two items that Chris and I spoke about, one of them had to do with the hiring practices, just ensuring the verbiage is in there, showing that he is going to be involved in the interview and assisting in the selection process, since we do now have someone in HR and that's his specialty. And the other one was to remove any reference to, I was gonna, Chris, say due process, and that is not what it was. It was...
Just cause.
Just cause, that's what it was. Remove any, remove any reference to just cause.
For at-will employees?
Well, yeah, well, with just cause, some of it, some of it is in the contract, but if we have our own policy and somehow if it's removed from the contract, I don't want to tie the town with that clause, because it can be more difficult. It's more bind, it's a little more binding.
So, Al, to address what, to raise Trish's concern, she's referring specifically to Section 10, that's page eight, under B penalties. Item number three, dismissal. Permanent employee may be dismissed by the town for activities prohibited in Section 10A or for other just cause. I believe, Trish, your concern was using just cause in the dismissal section?
Yes.
There? And in addition to that, on page...
I agree with it.
You agree with getting rid of it?
Yeah.
So the reason just cause is included in there is to mirror existing contract language?
That contract language can essentially change in future, and I don't want our own policy to then...
They may miss it if you don't...
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
So we're going to review this when, when Chris is done with this. He's going to sit down with our labor lawyers and go through this, and you're right, just cause is a higher standard. For example, if you have an at-will, non-collective bargaining unit employee, you don't want to give just cause protection ordinarily, you wouldn't want to do that. Now there, statutorily, there are certain non-union employees that do, in fact, as a matter of statute, have just cause protection. For example, a police chief has just cause protection. Fire marshal has just cause protection, and I can go through, but not the fire chief, believe it or not. So there are, we'll sit down and go through this when Chris is ready to present it to us. Fair enough? And I think we can work through it. It's an excellent point, excellent point. We don't want to, you don't want to extend just cause protection to at-will employees who are not covered by collective bargaining units.
Right, but I just, I don't think we have a need to reference it in this, even because of contracts change, you don't want to, you don't know who's going to be sitting where, we'll, would remember it's in here. So by saying, putting it any other way, I think is just a better way to go.
The second point was page three for the hiring procedures. Hiring procedures, Section 4, this kind of outlines what the hiring procedures will look like going forward. I believe that Trish's concern was that nowhere in the section does it explicitly say that the Human Resources Director will participate in each of the interviews. It certainly does not exclude me from participating in all of the interviews. It's my full intention to participate in all of the interviews. I did not think it was necessary until Trish and I spoke to maybe think to include that the Human Resources Director should participate in every interview. Well, that's the thing. Should the Human Resources Department ever develop into more than just a Human Resources Director, and were equipped with Human Resources Generalists, that you would typically see participate in some of the lower-level interviews for entry-level staff members? I wouldn't want to include anything in the hiring procedures in our rules and regulations that handcuff myself or a new director into participating in every single interview. Certainly, for any position that is in the Supervisors Union, a department head-level position, and again, it is my intent to participate in all of them, but not entirely sold on the idea of including anything in the hiring procedures that mandates the Personnel Director needs to be involved in every interview.
There be some sort of wording that it can't happen without you or not?
It could be, it could be an as necessary type of thing.
So as, as I explained to Chris, I'm fine with what the decision is ultimately going to be, because I'm not doing the job. However, we've not really had a dedicated HR department or someone very skilled necessarily, and the, my, the way that I read this was that you were go, like I explained last night, I read it like you were going to work with the department on what appropriate questions are, what not to ask, kind of help groom them into how to interview, and then they were just going to let the HR department know who they were hiring. So again, I don't care how it's worded, but I do think, I strongly feel, having an HR department with that being your specialty and not anybody else's, it doesn't need to say HR Director, but that there is some involvement in assisting with...
Establishing an interview panel?
...the interviews and the hiring of the individuals. That we do, we want to, I'm, I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay. So again, these are all things that will be reviewed, and are there any other, any other questions or additional feedback?
I have a question.
Sure.
I know we have unions, and I know the unions have their contracts, and they cover their own things. I would like to see something in here addressed towards trainings, annual training required by the person's job. Whether it's, you know, I know the teachers have their own unions, I get that, and the Board of Ed hires their people, I get that. But I want, make sure they have, they cover their training as far as them working with the hazardous chemicals, or the facility managers are working with the chlorines at the pool, or public works, and the chemicals they're working with, and everybody has the proper safety training needed to follow under the OSHA guidelines.
Sure.
We're actually working on something now, Chris, myself, and Rory, which I hope to present this board by the end of the year, where we would actually keep Town Hall closed on Wednesdays until 9:30. One of the days, two Wednesdays a month. One Wednesday would be for a training, where we would set up 12 trainings, sexual harassment, things like that, so we would have a standard schedule. The second Wednesday would be either for an all-staff meeting or for additional training, but we're still working out those details. So I think Chris and I agree with what you're saying. I think we're just a little premature to have that added in just yet.
Okay.
So, but that's, yeah.
Yeah, I'm 100% in agreement with having something like that in place, whether that exists in the personnel rules and regulations, or as a separate piece somewhere else, but I'm, I'm definitely in agreement that there should be something similar, similar to that in place.
Okay, great.
Stephon?
Yeah, just two quick things. In terms of recruitment, should we not have the town website listed as a place that jobs, all jobs will be posted? Should we not have the town website listed?
Shouldn't we?
We should. We should definitely have the town, the town website listed.
I don't see it listed in here.
Which page?
Section 2, recruitment. Newspaper advertisements posting in-house, which I guess if you use a broad term, posting in-house, could mean the website, but I think it should be explicitly stated that it should be on the website.
Not a problem.
Oh, agreed. We may have just missed that one.
Yeah, I think, I think you probably did, so I figured, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Not a problem.
And then my other question would be Section 4, number 8 there, that would kind of refer to us in a lot of cases. Is it possible that we would be able to take the language from "may" to a "shall" statement? So we should have the opportunity to, to interview?
You would like every position to come here, even if it's a lower level?
Well, I, well, I've said this ad nauseam, that at least supervisor levels, I think we should have the ability, any of us should have the ability to sit in on an interview with any of those people.
Supervisor or management position?
Sure, yeah.
Wait, which pages? So I'm looking at the right thing? Page 3? Oh, page 3, I'm on.
Number 8.
But the hiring of a pub, I'm sorry, Chris.
No, not at all.
The hiring of a public works, or hiring of a teacher, no.
No, not, no, not necessarily, but definitely of a supervisor or management position. This shouldn't be a surprise, I've said this 100 times.
No, it's not a surprise. No, 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 it's not, because you've said it over and over and over.
Yeah.
You had, no, the reason I asked is because that's pretty much alluding to all positions.
Sure.
So I wanted to...
In my dream world, I would like the opportunity, but that, I know that's never going to happen.
Wait, and number 8?
Yeah.
So the Appointing Authority may choose to interview the candidates prior to selecting one?
Yeah, because typically, we are the Appointing Authority on a lot of the positions in town.
Right.
So I think, I would like that language to not say "may." I would like it to say "shall," at least as it relates to management and supervisor-level positions.
Or how about another paragraph that says, "a representative from the Board of Selectmen," right?
Well, I want it to say, "all selectmen or all members of the Appointing Authority shall have the opportunity."
For managers or above?
Sure.
Supervisors or above? So you just put another paragraph in there?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
So do you want it there, or do you want it somewhere up where it actually talks about the interview, I guess panel or the interview teams, that the opportunity shall be made available to selectmen to sit in on interviews?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's probably the best way to do it. I, I just went to 8 because the Appointing Authority may choose to interview the candidates prior to selecting one of the three.
Right.
You know, if you want to open it up to more, but typically, we don't even open it up to more.
Yeah, because if it's, if it's a lower-level position?
Right.
Yeah, the name would be brought to the board if it's the tax collector town clerk that like Willis.
Yeah.
They'll come to the board, and you as well have that chance anyway, at least have the conversation with them.
I think in some cases...
But you want before that.
Well, I think in some cases, I would like to certainly have the opportunity to talk to, if there's three candidates, talk to three, before it's narrowed down to one, which has been the case in the past. Like, you know, I, Chris is supremely qualified for his job, but I'm, I'm not sure he was the only candidate for the HR Director position in town, for example. But he's the only one we met.
So I would go with, on 6, so Stephon, go to 6. In the case of the selection of department heads, and just use, pull this one out, the initial interviewing panel shall consist of at least three interviewers, and then can we add something? And the potential, the Board of Selectmen, I don't know what the wording is.
As well as...
Appointing Authority shall have the opportunity to sit in on interviews, I think would be fine, something like that.
But I...
Shall be afforded the opportunity to...
I'm not opposed to potentially including a member from the Board of Selectmen to, you're saying sit in on the panel?
I'm not even saying that you have to give all seven of us an opportunity to ask questions in an interview. You don't need to have one person sitting there with 12 people asking them, but I would like to be able to sit in and listen, at the very least.
Sure.
I'd take part.
And if mechanically, we were able to set it up, so if Kurt was asking questions in this example, we might be able to suggest questions for him, but that doesn't have to be like an official codified thing. I would just like it to be codified that we are allowed to sit in on those interviews.
I don't have a problem with that.
No, Richard?
Because I keep talking about it, and we, we haven't found the mechanism to actually making that official, and I'd like, I think this might be an opportunity.
Yeah, no, and again, I don't know what the practice has been in the past, but certainly, if you requested to, you know, want to participate at any part in that process.
Yeah, I don't feel like I've been necessarily excluded all that much, but I, I just feel like, I think it should be formal, formalized in some way.
Understood.
And that's, that's my feedback, thank you. Otherwise, I think it looks great.
Yeah, so as long as it's put in that hiring procedure section?
Yeah.
In some way?
Yeah. Just, you know, I just want a right of refusal to sit in on an interview of a department head or manager-level person.
Okay. Look to include that in number 6.
And it's not even me, I won't even have the opportunity, but other people, after me, after my time. So, thank you.
You may be back someday, you never know.
Yeah, maybe.
Would that include the Board of Ed as well?
No.
No, the Board of Ed, just as a Board of Ed.
Right. Right. Yeah, well, whatever their management level, I don't know how their structure is exactly, I'm not, I can't speak for them, but...
But we're not, we don't, we would never.
We're, yeah, we're set up differently. I believe the superintendent does all the hiring, with the exception of the superintendent, which is the Board of Ed. Yeah, so.
Okay, sure.
So Mike is the hiring authority. All right, so good. So any, any other issues, concerns, anything else we want cleaned up?
No.
All right, so we can go about this two ways. One is we can have this cleaned up and sent back to us at our next meeting, and then we can vote on it as the full, the full package, or you can vote tonight to tentatively approve it.
You would like us to review it?
Well, that's what I was saying, with, tentatively review it until it's signed off by Town Council.
Let's just have it, let's just have it edited and come back. We might not even have to have Chris here for it, we might be able to just send it to us a week in advance, let us stew on it, and if we have questions ahead of time, we can ask you or Chris.
Okay.
I think that's fine.
All right, so that'll be the plan. So they'll have it cleaned up for two weeks? We'll send it out on Thursday before with a regular packet, you guys review it. If you don't need Chris to come, if everyone's comfortable with what's in there, then I can address any questions we have left with Rich. We can vote on it, it will be done. If there's something more you want to discuss, we can have Chris come back.
That's fine.
Anybody good with that?
And Chris, what I want, I'm not asking you to like hardline anything that's going to commit you to every single kind of interview.
Sure.
I'm just looking for where the involvement from HR is to ensure it's, everything's complied with legally and how it should happen.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Thanks for coming out.
Okay. All right, so at this point, I want to make a motion to add to the agenda, discussion of possible action regarding ordinance amending Section 15-13 subsection C.
So moved.
Motion by Trish, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Act.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes, I motion passes 6-0. Next item on the agenda, discussion, take possible action regarding ordinance, Section 15-13 subsection C. If you recall, we did this ordinance amendment back in the springtime, but upon reviewing this with Rory, myself, Rich, and with the folks over at Portador, we think that there is a Scribner's error. So I'm going to let Rich.
You have a date of May in there, and the understanding was they would have until December to submit the paperwork. So to make long story, which, I might add, I understand the paperwork has been prepared and submitted, so they may not need until December, but it was a Scribner's error, or at least a breakdown in communications of some sort. So to be safe, just in case you have any other taxpayers out there who failed to get their paperwork in for the manufacturer's exemption, I think December 1 will give plenty of time. So if you can authorize the correction of the Scribner's error, and then go forward and perhaps actually add the Portador matter to the agenda, so you could vote to accept their personal property declaration.
Okay. Okay, so you passed out tonight, you have just the update, so I'll go through, read it, and then we can approve it. Section 15-13C of the Seymour Town Code is hereby repealed and reenacted as amendment as follows, notwithstanding subsection B effective for the October 1, 2016, grand list only. The deadline... 2016 Grand List only. The deadline to meet with the Board of Selectmen shall be prior to December 1st, 2019, at a regularly scheduled meeting. Such meetings shall be public. Can I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Al, second by Ann Marie. So, Rich, under discussion, we would then make a separate motion to accept the Portador's personal property declaration, and that would meet this requirement?
Yes, for the assessment date of October 1, 2016.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye. Motion passes 6-0. I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda discussion of possible action regarding Portador's personal property declaration for the October 1st, 2016 Grand List in compliance with section 15-13C of the Seymour Town Code. Is that okay, Rich?
Correct, yes.
So moved.
Motion by Al, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion?
Do we need to see that?
Uh, we have it. That's actually in Rich's hands, so, but let's vote on it, and then we can, we have to vote on it first. Okay, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye. Motion passes 6-0.
We're still adding it to the question.
Yeah. Next item on the agenda, Portador personal property declaration for October 1st, 2016 Grand List per section 15-13C of the Seymour Town Code. So, okay, so we got all of the information in from Portador, which Rich has.
I have a copy. I believe the original document is with Joe Kuziak, the assessor, which is where it should be.
Correct. So, we're going to have everything reviewed for accuracy, to make sure all the documents are filled out correctly, and we have everything that we need. So, assuming that is the case, what would happen at our next meeting?
Just vote to accept it.
Okay. So, would everyone want to give Rich the opportunity to review it and then just come back with us and give us his opinion? Is that going to be good enough for everybody? Do you want to see copies of what was sent in?
It would actually give me an opportunity to talk to Joe Kuziak.
Okay.
Make sure everything is proper.
So, but we're okay doing this on October 1st?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Scribner's error correction.
Perfect. All right, so everybody understands kind of where we stand on that? So, we'll have, in your packets for the next meeting, we'll have a memo from Rich as to kind of what transpired, and then we'll also have all the information that Portador submitted for 2016.
We don't need a motion for the Scribners, correct?
We voted on that already.
Oh. Okay, so that went right over me.
Yep.
I have to ask, because, you know, I missed it, even though I voted.
No, that's okay.
I'm all right looking foolish.
All right, we're going to add one more thing to the agenda. Like to add discussion of possible action regarding town-owned house at 165 West Street. Motion by Trish, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
No.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye. Motion passes 6-0. Next item of discussion, take possible action regarding town-owned house at 165 West Street. So, if you recall, 165 West Street is the red house on West Street that the town took over through tax foreclosure. This house has generated a tremendous amount of interest, people who want to purchase the house potentially, so I asked Rich to take a look into what the process would be.
So, yeah, so as a first step, I would ask you to make a formal referral for an 8-24 review to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
Do we have the address written on that? Did you say 165?
165. Is that not the right address?
No, 165. 128. Red one with the collapsing corner?
Yeah.
165 is the one right next to that one.
Yeah, you don't want to refer the wrong property. Is it 128?
Almost 100%.
I lived in 165 West Street at one time, and that's not 165 West Street.
Oh, really? Okay.
I was a little kid, yeah.
So, somebody who lives at 165 West Street is in a panic right now if they're watching this.
They took my house?
Yeah, okay, 128. Here we go.
I didn't do that!
Surprise.
Do we have to redo?
We don't have to, do we?
No, 128.
Yeah, 128.
128 West Street.
A Scribner's error.
No, no, no. That's not a Scribner's error. It's the wrong property. 128, who's this Scribner guy? 128 West Street for an 8-24 review, a formal referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission. There is also a state statute that when a municipality sells municipally-owned property, that it has to be posted, and there has to be a public hearing. There is an exception for foreclosures, because when they wrote the law, they were thinking people were doing tax foreclosures. This particular property was acquired through the tax sale done through the marshal by the tax collector, so it wasn't done pursuant to a foreclosure. So, I would also ask you to set it down for a public hearing, and when we're done with that, we will go forward and post it.
So, we would do the public hearing after the 8-24 referral?
I think that's proper, yes.
Okay. And just for the mechanics of the sale itself, just so the board understands, is it, do we take sealed bids? Is it, I mean, do we say, show up at 1 o'clock and we do an auction? I mean, how does...
It's an auction-type thing, isn't it, Rich?
You don't have to, I don't believe you have to do an auction. In fact, in some municipalities, they retain a realtor and they list the property.
Storage work.
Oh, okay.
So, that's one possibility. Another way is literally to accept sealed bids with a solicitation that gives you the right to reject any and all bids, and you see what comes in.
I like the sealed bid.
What's the board's preference? I mean, I don't know what the answer is now, but... I mean, sealed bids to make it fair? Do you want to show up at a Tuesday at 2 o'clock and let the bidding begin?
Is there an amount that we must recoup?
Back taxes, probably.
What is that amount?
I actually don't know.
Well, how probably?
Because we didn't take it, because it was done through the tax collector's office with the deed sale, so we had no involvement in that. We had an involvement in terms of getting control of the property and getting the folks that were living there out of there. So, I don't know. So, just, we can answer that going forward, and we could talk about that in terms of how we decide to go forward on the sale. You're right, there has to be a number.
Right.
There had to be a back tax number, but I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I want to make sure we're not, we're going to at least be made whole.
Well, I think the idea would be, the quicker we can sell this, the quicker somebody can put it into a property where tax...
Right, we're going to actually get taxed.
I don't disagree with that, so I'm not opposed to sealed bids.
At the end of the day, you're not guaranteed that anybody is going to be willing to spend what we've sunk into it.
No, but I'd still like to know what that amount is, if we made whole, so that when we're looking, we know.
I had a recollection. I had a recollection of, out of sheer curiosity of finding out what the back taxes were on it, and I believe the back taxes were less than what you may expect. That...
Yeah, it's not a huge number.
No, it wasn't.
Yeah, it was like a few years of, a few thousand dollars.
Yeah, I recall looking at it.
I want to say maybe three years of three grand, something like that. It wasn't wild.
I didn't really understand how, yeah, I had one of those reactions where I was a little dumbfounded by...
But the point is, the longer we wait, the more we're going to be sinking into it as a lost tax revenue, so...
Well, you own a piece of property right now that...
Yeah.
Yeah, because if any money that's paid, I guess, would go to prior year taxes.
So, whatever does it the quickest, I think, would be my preference. Whatever gets us off the books the quickest.
Okay. All right, so we'll do the, we'll do the 8-24, at least start the process, kick that to planning and zoning, and then we just go from there.
Yeah, let's let that come back, and then we could look into it, I mean, and decide whether you want to do sealed bids with a, you know, with a floor price, or...
I think that would be quicker.
Yeah, I would think so, to the sealed bid with a floor price and the ability to reject...
Reject any and all, yeah.
And I'd still like to know what figure inclusive of everything would make us whole, so we know how far...
Yeah, we can get...
We'll find out what that is. But like I say, I had this general recollection when I...
128 West Street. Okay. Everybody good on that?
I was kind of looking forward to a live auction.
A live auction.
Oh, I'd love that. I'd love that too.
The old live auction.
Head it up. You can head it up.
No, I would do that.
You could do a live auction with people that show up in order to, so, all right, for foreclosures, for foreclosure sales. For example, they're conducted by court-appointed attorneys, which, and there are, folks that want to bid are required to bring a certain deposit amount, so you can set the parameters, and buy a bank or certified check in good funds, and folks can bid, and they go back and forth until someone is the high bidder, and that's, that's the end of it. And then the committee, the court-appointed committee, takes that back to the court for approval. So, in a way, you could, you could do a process like that if you choose to. You could also do the sealed bids, see what they come in at. You'll have a general idea what the market value is from the assessor, and if you don't like the way they come in, you reject them all, you know?
So, that could be my question, so you can...
You can, you are, yeah, because we're going to, the bid solicitation will say we have the right, yeah. Those are the rules.
So, you have a good idea of the temperature of what people are going to bid.
Yeah, yeah. And like I say, then there are some communities, I can think of one in particular, that a few years back went out with an RFQ and picked a realtor to be able to list properties that they were taking back, because there were a number of them.
I think we have, we've actually had a bunch of people ask about it, so I think if we put it out that we were going to do it...
You're going to, you're going to do it, and then you don't have the commission issue, yeah.
So, if we do the live bids, Stephon, you're going as the straw horse that is going to try to run the price up? Just keep bumping it. That's right. That's right.
Just make sure he knows he's not bidding on 165.
Where'd this guy come from? That's right.
Fred looked rich. Cowboy monocle.
Yeah. Oh, that'd be fantastic. All right, so we're good on that one?
He's going to be stuck with a property.
That's right. Surprise, it'll take the 100 million. All right.
I don't know how to tell you about this one.
That's right. At least they got a place to live, not a chance of throwing you out. All right, so then just as a matter of housekeeping. The 8-24, right, yeah. So, I'll entertain a motion to request an 8-24 referral from the Planning and Zoning Commission on 128 West Street to allow for a potential sale to the public.
So moved.
Motion by Trish, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye. Motion passes 6-0. Item number 8 is appointments. We have two appointments, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments dated August 20th, 2019, for some reason.
Scribber error.
Yeah, Scribner's error. That should be September 17th. Motion by Ann Marie. Was that Ann Marie?
That was, yeah.
Is there a second? Second by Stephon. Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye. Motion passes 6-0. Item number 9, tax refunds and abatements. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the tax collector's report dated September 13, 2019, as presented. Motion by Trish, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? Let's give it a quick look, make sure there's no conflicts. Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye. Motion passes 6-0. Item number 10, we have no transfers before us. Item number 11, we have two pieces of correspondence. One is the check registers. The other is a letter to the Board of Selectmen from the Chair of the Police Commission, who is questioning some settlements to grievances that were made. He doesn't seem to think that those, that settlement was proper, even though he was involved in the settlements and in the meeting, so he's obviously forgotten his attendance at that meeting. So, move on to item number 12, public comments. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Hearing no public comment, move on to item number 13, Selectmen's public comments, and we'll start, as always, with the esteemed Mr. Bohniak.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Nothing tonight? Is this about to get fun? Mr. Van Egan? Because I have some comments I'd like to make this evening. Mr. Bruno?
I have comments, too.
Please.
Oh, boy.
I just want to say the town looks really clean. As always, under the current Public Works administration, I keep receiving comments how fantastic the town looks, and as a Public Works Board member, people know I'm on that board. Those who do, they keep saying how great the town looks, and just want to tell Tony Di Primo and his hard-working crew to keep it up. Getting a lot of great feedback, and our town is definitely looking much, much better than it used to. Regarding the Pumpkin Festival on September 22nd, looking forward to it, because I won't be volunteering my time this year like I have done many times in the past, so I have the opportunity now to enjoy the festival with my family and friends, and I'm really looking forward to that. So, hopefully we get a good turnout. Great event. Thanks.
Thank you, Al. Ann Marie?
Okay, I have a lot. Okay, so my first comment is, congratulations on our bond rating. Our bond rating is a double A-plus rating, and just to give you a little history, for those that don't know, according to Moody's rating, 2000 to 2006, we had an A-minus.
Standard and force.
Huh?
Standard and force.
Standard and force, sorry. We had an A-minus, okay? 2007 to 2008, we had an A-plus. 2009 to 2013, we had a double A-minus. Kurt took office in 2011. So, from, we went from a double A-minus to a double A-plus since Kurt's been in office. I think that's, I think that's pretty good, considering where we are to where we are now. Another thing is Seymour is the only town that has not raised its mill rates this year for their budget. We haven't raised our mill rate in the past three years?
Four.
Four years, okay? So, I think that's pretty good. Okay, number two, want to congratulate the Seymour football team on their win over St. Paul's last Friday, 21 to 14. Number three, I have them all ordered, sorry. Just a reminder that it is, I know it's, we're getting into the end of the summer, fall season. It is against the law. The DEEP has a regulation on the books that you cannot drain your pool water into the street, meaning you can drain your pool water into your grass, which is fine and legal, but you cannot run the hose down your driveway into a sewer drain, because that is considered illegal dumping in the DEEP's eyes, and it's a $500 fine for residents.
You hear that, Stephon?
Okay. I'm not looking at Stephon. Stephon didn't do it. Stop picking up.
He's got a pool at 128 West Street.
And just a reminder, now we're getting into fall, the leaves, be careful. You cannot, you cannot blow the leaves onto the road either.
Stephon?
Public Works has to come and clean it, and as when we get into the snow, your contractor or you cannot push your snow into the road. It's part of our ordinance, okay? It's our ordinance, not ordinance. Ordinance, okay? That was three. Five, as Al said, you know, Public Works is doing a great job. We had a meeting last Monday for Public Works with Oak Ridge, and Oak Ridge resident went down. There was a lot of talk on Seymour Moms and Community about the issues with our contractor and the trash pickups. Oak Ridge representative was there. They met with us. They understand how displeased we are with them. One resident showed up to voice their opinion, and we thanked that resident for coming.
Did a good job.
He did. Bulk pickup will continue until the end of October, and then we'll go into brown bag leaves. Public Works will pick up your brown leaf bags. Only brown leaf bags will Public Works pick up in November, and in October stops our bulk pickup. So, if you have anything in bulk, call Town Hall, deal then, call it with Tony. I think I covered it all. Oh, no, the Pumpkin Festival is this weekend. Got it.
All right. Trish, was there anything you might add after that thesis?
Well, being last, I had my thunder stolen. I was going to mention the bond rating and also mention...
Oh, you're not last. I'm going to be last tonight.
Well, okay. But I do think it's worth mentioning again, and also thank you to Doug Thomas, our Finance Director, because he's the one that's putting forth all the paperwork to earn that rating. And I thank him for doing that year after year, since we've begun going after... and I thank him for doing that year after year since we've begun going after that. Also, looking forward to going to the Pumpkin Festival, and I know I bring this up a few times, because I know my husband's involved, but I also want to mention, we've had a lot of volunteers over the course of the past four to five weeks, helping over at Chatfield Park where the land trust is, and they've done an amazing job, a lot of cleanup, and thank you to everyone that's come out and helped with that, or anywhere else in town where something similar might be going on. That's all I have, thank you.
Oh, I'd like to make a few statements tonight, if folks don't mind. I'd just like to clear up a few things that were stated during public comment. Just a couple things. Number one, the town's bond rating is a double A-plus, and we have received the GFOA Excellence in Financial Reporting the last four years, so I will take the opinion of the professionals who feel that the town of Seymour is in exceptional financial shape versus a person that has no credibility whatsoever to make a statement as to the financial condition of this community. That's number one. Number two, the communications equipment, the bond would be for 10 years, not 20 years. Bond Council would not allow that, so I'm not 100% sure where the 20 years came from. When we discussed a lease for the community center, it was a lease purchase we were discussing. With regards to the removal of the sign from the community center, that was done when the new signage was put up, and I actually got a call from the former First Selectmen to thank me for taking the sign down. He thought that he hasn't been in office for 15 years, I believe now, so he was very happy to have the sign taken down with his name on it. And then finally, with FOI requests, we answer and address all FOI requests in accordance to the general statutes of the state of Connecticut. FOI is not an opportunity just to ask questions. If you are a former First Selectmen and don't understand how to read an OS or bond documents, that is not the town of Seymour's problem.
Forgot the principal.
But yeah, and with regards to a comment made about, we haven't paid any principal on any of the road payments, that is factually incorrect.